We're gonna have to be late, so that's alright. I don't wanna hold anybody up. And it is six o'clock, so we'll roll call in to start this meeting.
Recording in progress.
So Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
And Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
And Shannon?
Shannon Dunham here.
And Cindy Kuzensky here. So welcome. I wanna make a couple of announcements. We do, we have, oh, there's the mayor, so we're gonna wait, let the mayor roll call in too. Excellent. Welcome, Mayor. You can finish our roll call in. So you would be the last person, Mayor LaChapelle?
Aye.
Okay, welcome. So first, apologies to the community. We have another glitch. We are having some technical difficulties. We can set up a meeting, but we weren't able to activate the meeting. Right now, we're going through Dr. Leclair's little work through, and we are going to be working with the technology department to fix this problem. We will not disappoint you again. What we will do is use Dr. Leclair's avenue until we can fix the problem, so that when we schedule a meeting, we'll actually be able to have it. But all four of us, who usually activate meetings, could not do so. So apologies. The other is that Maren and Ben are coming, but they have to be a little bit late, so we've started the meeting without them. So welcome, everybody. And Megan, do we have correspondence?
I don't have a lot to report this week. We have two emails from family members or community members. One following up from Jenny and Papa George and Aunt Hallie, sort of revisiting the idea of discussing transportation, coming up with some creative ideas for how to handle it, and suggesting, and wondering if there's a place for like a transportation subcommittee or working group to kind of think through some of these issues and report back to parents. And we also have an email from Leah Ewing, in which she's asking for an update to the proposed handbook changes. And just, I directed her to the video of the last meeting where we went over that kind of stuff, and no follow-up there. So that is really all that I have heard from, from the community.
Okay. And do we have gifts?
We do have gifts. Let me scroll to that page here. And we, I'd like to make a motion to approve a donation of thirty dollars in memory of William Moore Senior from Diane Hashd and Ed Carter's family, who are friends of Robert Moore, who is William's brother.
I'll second that.
Okay. Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Everybody, Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
And Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a donation of one thousand two hundred dollars from the Mountain View PTO to benefit the libraries at Mountain View School.
I second that.
Okay, Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
Yeah, very generous.
Shannon Dunham, aye. Sorry.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. And a big thank you. That's a great gift.
And we have a third one, another generous gift. I'd like to make a motion to approve the donation of school supplies from ESP Auto for students in need in our district.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye. And Maren is going to be connecting, so, so, thank you very much. All right. Welcome, Maren. Now, we'd like to welcome our, this year's student representative. So we'll say a big hearty welcome to Mackenzie McCarthy, and turn it over to her.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Currently at East Hampton High School, the open house is this Thursday, the twenty-second, from six to eight PM. Student Council is hosting the WMASC Fall Conference on October seventh at our school. We are planning homecoming, and the date hasn't been set yet. We are also finalizing Spirit Weekdays and planning the pep rally. That's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm sorry, can you just repeat the dates on the, I'm sorry, the times for the open house?
So it's this Thursday, the twenty-second, from six to eight PM.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but welcome. And I'm sure we're going to be asking plenty throughout the year, so, thank you. All right. So it's now time for public comments, so we're gonna open up public speak. I'm gonna ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and state who you are. And please signal if you have anything that you would like to say to us, because it is open right now. The mouse is scrolling through the look. I always worry if it's too early, but it's six oh six. I think we're okay. People have had a chance to, I don't see anybody who wants to speak. All right, so I'm gonna close public speak, and we'll go on. Thank you. All right, so now we have presentations. Dr. Leclair, are you gonna lead into this?
I will lead into this. Thank you. I didn't know if you were gonna say something else. Sorry.
No, 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 no.
So this evening, Cindy Mojica from East Hampton High School, from our Diversity Center, is here to talk about some upcoming events. She wants to make both the school committee and the public aware of. And then we're going to lead right into a discussion about some work Safe Passages is doing. And we have Safe Passage, we have Cindy Mojica and Amy Cronin-Dicaprio here to speak about that. So I think Cindy will just segue into that after she gets done her Hispanic Heritage Month activity. So Cindy, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Hi. First, thank you for letting me, this space for me. And actually, Amy is not here. She's a little sick. But Amanda is here, and she will be speaking for Amy today. I'm going to start with a welcome in Spanish for everyone, because that's what we're celebrating. So buenas noches a toda nuestra comunidad de East Hampton. Mi nombre es Cindy Mojica. Yo represento a la comunidad hispana en la escuela superior de East Hampton. Y queremos invitarlo a cuatro eventos que vienen este mes en celebración de la mes de la hispanidad. Así que todo bienvenido. Hi, welcome, everyone. My name is Cindy Mojica. I work at East Hampton High School as the Diversity Inclusion Liaison. And we'll be announcing four main events that we will be having at East Hampton High School. I heard that I have some shared screen. Can I share my screen right?
Yep. You should be able to. Thank you.
Thank you. So these are more, our four main events. We're going to have a movie night, and we're going to show In the Heights. We also going to have a local hero panel. We send invitations out, and this is going to be our own local hero. So it's our teachers that are from Hispanic descendant and Latinx. We're going to have a police, invite police officer, Hispanic, and business owner in our own, in the city of East Hampton, we have other Hispanics. So we'll be celebrating actual, our own local heroes. Then we're going to have Hispanic Heritage in the US. This is a presentation that has been put together with a collaboration with the Diversity Leadership Club at the East Hampton High School. So the youth is involved in this presentation. We're going to have two sessions. One is going to be for the teachers and right after school, from two thirty to three thirty. And then we're going to have a second session, will be open from five to six, and this will be in the auditorium of the East Hampton High School. So this presentation is an hour, and we are going to have a Q and A at the end. Again, this is also collaboration with the Diversity Leadership Club, youth students, so this is going to be amazing. And then at the end of our closing of Hispanic Heritage Month, we'll have the fiesta and our show. So this is going to start at five thirty to seven. We're going to have, the, our show is actually the students. The students are making art projects, and they will be shown and displayed on this day. And the people who visit us are going to vote for this artwork. And we're going to have three prizes for the students, so please come and join us. We're going to have also nonprofit tables that we had invited, being East Hampton Youth Coalition one of them. And just for the public to come in and have information, from five thirty to six thirty, the table will be open. And then we're going to have it from six thirty to seven thirty, music, open music for everyone to dance. And we're also going to have some special candy from Central South in the Caribbean. So we're going to welcome all of you. Do you have any question before I send it to Amanda?
So my opening question is this, how advertised is this around the community right now?
So right now, it's actually in the CD website right now. We do have a Facebook, the Diversity Inclusion Center at the East Hampton High School. We have emailed the parents. So we have emailed the parents and informed of this, and we have emailed the staff. I believe Mr. Evans has done that. So that's how we are promoting right now. So this is our second year doing this, and we hope we have plenty of visitors and learn about our heritage and our culture, and how we have impacted the USA, not only with progressive and heroes, also by the economy.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No. So as most of you know, that in addition to my role as a diversity liaison, I also support the Say Something Youth Initiative. It's a partnership between Safe Passage Community Action and East Hampton High School to support healthy relationship. And Amanda is here to talk a little bit about what we have planned for this fall and how you can actually get involved with us.
Thank you so much for that, Cindy. I'm also gonna share a screen. I just have a quick PowerPoint for you all. Thank you all for having me here. It's great to be back. I think it's been almost like a year now since I was at my last school committee meeting. So it's so nice to see some familiar faces and some new ones as well. The Say Something Youth Initiative is a partnership, as Cindy said, between Safe Passage, Community Action of Pioneer Valley and East Hampton High School. In that partnership, we deliver our evidence-informed violence prevention curriculum to all ninth and tenth graders at the high school. And we also provide leadership opportunities for East Hampton High School students. Our two leadership opportunities are a summer leadership academy, which is a two-week programming, and then our advisory group, which is what I'm here to talk with us about tonight. This is our classroom curriculum, just briefly, if folks are curious about what we talk about with students in the classroom. And then our advisory group is a space that is comprised of youth advisors, adult stakeholders, meaning faculty, parents, community members, and Say Something Youth Initiative staff. Each school year, we have two cohorts of our advisory group, one that happens in the fall and a second in the spring. During each cohort, we have ten paid youth advisor positions. We meet four times month, four times after school, one meeting a month, from two fifteen to three thirty in room one oh four, which is the Diversity Center at East Hampton High School. And the purpose of this group is to provide feedback and guidance on Say Something Youth Initiative programming at EHS. To give you all an example of like what that could potentially look like, some of the projects that the youth advisors last year took on with the support of the Say Something Youth Initiative staff were talking about how to raise awareness of this campus during Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. They led and participated in discussions around school policy and student needs. They engaged with legislative officials at the Yellow Forum, where they were able to talk about issues that young people in our community are facing directly to legislative officials who represent them. We also, during that time together, adapted our field guide, which is a tool, it's a paper tool that supports our prevention curriculum. And the young people in the advisory group helped us adapt that to a youth audience. This is a group of impressive young people that we've been able to engage. We've had full advisory groups the first two times that we did it last year. And there's only so much they can do on their own without the support of adults working alongside of them. The strong relationships that these young people have with caring adults are essential part of our youth programming. And this year, we're expanding our advisory group to include supportive adults from the East Hampton community. I'm here today to ask if you all, if people that you know, might be interested in joining. We would love to see more adult faces and representation at the table alongside these young people who are taking time out of their days and energy and really having some impactful things to share and say. Again, we meet every month. It's the second Wednesday of each month that we meet in the Diversity Center from two fifteen to three thirty. Our first meeting is going to be October twelfth. If you have any interest in learning more about it, how to get involved, or how to join, we would love to talk to you all about that. You don't need to attend every single meeting. We get that schedules are really challenging. We don't have that expectation for the young people joining our space, but it wouldn't be reasonable to have the expectation for the adults joining our space. But we would love to just get more folks interested in working alongside us towards helping these young people make some of these changes that they're interested in seeing as they're learning to develop healthy relationships. Here is just a quick overview of our meeting schedule for this fall. Again, it's the second Wednesday of each month. If you're not able to attend advisory group and are interested in getting involved in supporting Say Something Youth Initiative and young people in East Hampton, we invite everybody to join our adult labs. Our adult labs are adult-facing prevention programming. It is regularly offered at Safe Passage on a bimonthly basis virtually. It's a seven-session program, and they alternate between like daytime sessions and evening sessions, intentionally to try to reach as many folks as we can. I'm sorry, it's phones going off in the background. We also, in addition to like our community-facing lab that we hold bimonthly, we also can host closed labs, for like a group from an organization, group. We've done like college courses, things like that, can come together and have a closed space where you're able to get all the seven sessions of that curriculum in a cohort that is created by you all. If either of those are things that anybody is interested in, we, here is our, our contact information, which I'm also gonna include in chat, so folks can access it easily. And we would love to hear from folks and get involved and engage you all as well as engaging the young people. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a few. I don't know if anybody else does, but, okay. So my first one is, were you able to fill all ten positions? That's awesome. And that was the same last year?
So this year, we're still recruiting, but last year for our two cohorts, we had two full groups of advisors, and we actually had some other folks that like came and attended, like one-offs. So there were some meetings that we had, like up to fourteen or fifteen young people sitting at the table with us.
That's awesome. That's really good. And so this year, you're recruiting still. Obviously, you haven't had your meetings, so is it looking promising, like you'll have a full roster?
Yes. Ms. Mojica is fantastic in supporting us in that, and you know, that's a huge benefit that we have. We're not in the building all the time, but Ms. Mojica is and has trusted relationships with the young people. So that collaborative relationship that we have with her is huge for us in terms of being able to get used to the table. But we do anticipate, I know I was at East Hampton High today dropping off the materials, and Ms. Mojica shared that she already has students coming and asking about advisory group this fall.
Awesome, awesome. So the invitation to join the advisory, are the four meetings at two fifteen to three thirty, is that correct?
Correct. And that's an open invitation.
But I'm teaching in another town, and those are the only times, like, what if, and I know Lori's teaching, so, is it possible, or would it be too disruptive to say perhaps show up at three o'clock?
Oh, I, not at all. I think, I think that would be absolutely fine. You know, the beginning of our meeting is usually like all the kids wanting a snack, because it's the end of day, doing check-ins, then taking a breather for a few minutes. So we usually aren't starting right at two fifteen. And again, like we have that expectation for the young people, like a lot of them do like theater and can't get there right at two fifteen. And CTEC students is another example, where they're not in the building by two fifteen off the buses. So our goal is to be flexible and accommodating and have folks who are interested in sharing space with us and working on these projects, being able to do that.
Okay. You know, I'm not volunteering you, Ben, but you're, you've been very interested in meeting in person with students. And I would love to get there, but the earliest I would be able to for sure do it is like three o'clock. So that is possible, and it's not too disruptive to pop in for meetings.
It would be helpful for us to know if you were like planning to come that day, just to give the students a heads up. We always like to tell them when, you know, other folks that are not as familiar with are joining their spaces. But outside of that, we would love to have you there.
Okay. That's, that's excellent. So can you make sure that we have, it's just the second Wednesday of every month, so I really don't need a calendar. Okay. All right. Those are my questions. Thank you. Anybody have any others or comments?
I just need to check my work schedule and make sure that I have no meetings on that day, but I would absolutely love to be there. So I'll follow up with you about that.
Perfect. Thank you, Ben. And also, like, please feel free to share with colleagues and parents that you're talking to. We would love to have a diverse group of people sitting at this table.
Cool.
I did mention this, Cindy, that I would like to help out, for sure.
That's super exciting. Any other questions?
I had mine.
Thank you all for having me here. It was great to see everybody.
Thank you. Very excited.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Cindy.
I just wanted to run back to Cindy really quick. The, I'll let the event on the eleventh, I think we have a school committee meeting that night, so it might be hard to, to make the evening presentation. Would it be possible to go to the afternoon one? If, like, I know it's for teachers, but could we sneak, sneak in the back? Okay.
So, so we're, we're open. We just say teachers, because we wanna save like the best seats for the,
Got it.
For the administrations. But everyone, you know, if you can make it, you can come in, definitely. The Diversity Leadership Club students will be directing everyone to the auditorium, so they will be participating. So if you see youth, I, the youth of the Diversity Leadership Club is very involved in this activities. I, I make sure of that, so they, if you see young people walking you to sleep, that's what, that's who they are. But you're welcome to come between two thirty and three thirty.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone, and I hope to see you all on this beautiful four activities that we have for the community of East Hampton.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. All right. So now, Dr. Leclair, we turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to spend a few minutes, very briefly, talking about our work around our strategic plan. And so I'm going to share my screen with you. So for those of you that are not familiar with our work on the strategic plan, we decided to invest some time last school year on updating our strategic plan, which had, which had not been done since prior to my coming to the school district, so it was needed. So I just want to start off by giving you a little data. We met from, most of the school year last year, we, we received our final strategic plan in April, and we started the summer before convening committees. So we had two district committees. We had a stakeholder group committee, and we had a strategic planning committee, and people served on various committees in the district. And we had stakeholders that were parents, educators, administrators, community members. So we had a diverse group on those committees. And each committee had different roles. And then we, and we contracted with a company called Strategy Matters out of the Boston area to help us with this work, because we thought that it was really important work, and we wanted to do it right. So over the course of the year, they conducted internal and external interviews of educators, community partners, and East Hampton city officials. They did a desk review of all of our documents, like strategic plans, older strategic plans, district improvement plans, newsletters, handbooks, policies. They did a desk review of all our documents. They held two public town hall meetings with ninety-one registered participants. We did a survey, and we had eight hundred and seventy-one responses to the survey. And the responses came from parents, students, educators, residents. And we also did phone interviews for those that had difficulty either writing or difficulty with surveys or difficulty with the language. We held eleven focus groups over the course of the year. And we had students, parents, educators, and school committees in various focus groups. So that's just a bird's eye view of how encompassing the work was, and how we tried to be inclusive of as many stakeholders as we could be in the development of our strategic plan. So let me get into a little bit of the work itself, a little bit of the information. Oops, someone's jumping in. So, I'm sorry, I let somebody in and I went forward. So there are three main areas that I wanna kind of give you an overview. First is our guiding principles. This is a statement of what's most important to us in East Hampton. This is kind of what rose to the top. This allows us to kind of see the boundaries of our work. So I won't read all these to you, but I'll read the kind of the italics area. So our guiding principles are demonstrating kindness, respect, and support towards each other, working to create a community that is nurturing, inclusive, and equitable, engaging as learners who persevere through challenges, and fostering awareness of our place within a broader global community and recognition of our interdependence. So those are our guiding principles. Then we came up with our mission. And our mission, is the role that we're claiming in building the world that we want. So our mission is to facilitate the academic, social, and emotional development of all students so that they can lead full lives, exercise informed choice, and contribute to their communities. And our vision is the more perfect world we hope to create, and it should be grounded in our values. So our vision is kind of the pie in the sky goal that we want to reach for. And our vision in East Hampton is a future where East Hampton Public Schools are the heartbeat of our community, where all are accepted and able to authentically participate in academic, emotional, and social learning within a setting that's welcoming, inclusive, and adapted to the needs of all students. within a setting that's welcoming, inclusive, and adapted to the needs of all students. So again, that verb, that verbiage, that work came from a lot of stakeholders had input into that. The guiding principles, the vision, and the mission. And from that work, we came up with four goals. And we're going to talk a little bit about those goals tonight because this is kind of leading our work going forward. The first goal is to ensure that our curriculum are aligned to our guiding principles. The second goal is to continually refine the approach to engaging families, caregivers, and the wider community. The third goal is to ensure the ongoing commitment to our mission and that equity drives our decision-making and our conduct. And the fourth goal is to foster effective advocacy with partners and stakeholders to ensure adequate resources to meet our strategic goals. And now, all of this work came before this summer. So at, um, our summer retreat, whoops, I skipped one. At our summer retreat for the leadership team, we kind of broke down what we're focusing on in each goal as a school district this year. So these are kind of the chunks that we're trying to, um, address under each goal this year where our focus area is. So under goal one, we're beginning a process to audit curriculum to identify teaching practices and contact, content that conflicts with our guiding principles. So we're going to try and take apart some of our curriculum areas and look at, um, our guiding principles and find where the alignment is and where the alignment is missing. There are resources that the Department of Education, um, has put out around auditing curriculum. So we'll rely on some of those resources, resources to help guide our work. And you hear about this, um, at the school committee level all the time. We're working on ensuring that social emotional learning is central to all our learning experiences by developing a range of clearly articulated social emotional programs for students at all levels. So while we have things in place, some have been there for many years, some we've added over the last two or three years. We want to, we want to develop kind of a matrix of all the social emotional supports we have throughout the district so that the community and all stakeholders can see, um, the work that we're doing in that area. I'll stop anywhere you want. If you want to jump in with a question, ask away, or you can save it to the end. Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, um, this is, this is amazing language and I'm excited to talk about all of this. Um, it's definitely making me think about the idea of a curriculum committee, so it feels timely. Um, but I'm also curious, uh, uh, if there's any kind of, I know that there was a lot of, uh, community engagement in the strategic plan. But as you audit the curricula and begin to ensure that social emotional learning is central to all learning experiences, will the community continue to be involved in, in, in that work that's going on? Or is this like a kind of admin specific level?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's admin, but I wouldn't say it's necessarily community either. It's the, the educators that specialize in those areas, I think, are the ones that we will focus on bringing together because we want to tap into the expertise of the people we have in our district. You know, we have a new social emotional coordinator at Mountain View School, so that's really her area of expertise. So we'll rely on her to help bring that together. We've also, um, in, the committee may not be aware, but I think it was last year or the year before, we started a PLC, a professional learning community around social emotional learning. So we have educators and staff in the building that have been dedicated to this work for several years. So they've done a lot of legwork and so I want to tap into the expertise that we have within our four walls. And they also, um, we were accepted into a Department of Education, um, academy last year for social emotional learning. Um, and so we've had people that have been participating in that DESI Academy for over a year. They're in year two now of that academy work. So we have a lot, we have a lot of expertise to tap into within our community. And that's just one example, social emotional. I mean, obviously, we have educators in areas like math and literacy, even in history, that are people that have a lot of professional expertise. And so we want to tap into the expertise that they have and collaborate with outside resources when we need to. Um, we met with some folks from the Department of Ed this afternoon, um, Julian Levin and I, to talk about some curriculum work that we're embarking on with, uh, their support. And so they're going to come in and do some observations in the classroom and help provide us with some resources that we may need. So we, we have that ongoing work internally, um, relying on the expertise that we have. And Julian Levin, as our curriculum director, really leads most of that work. Does that help?
Yeah, I'm letting it kind of sink in.
Okay.
Sounds, it sounds good. Uh, I guess I'm just, I'll be curious to, to hear what you, what you find out. Um, you know, like, should there be discrepancies or should there be issues? It'd be, it'd be really great to keep, keep up with what, what kind of, and, you know, what you find.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, you know, I know that there's limits to what the, the community, like, parents and such can, can, can really do, but it would be really great if we could find a way to communicate to the, you know, to parents and families what, what we're, what this is and, and how this works. Because I've heard parents ask me, what happened to the strategic plan? What's going on with the strategic plan? Um, it'd be great to just let everybody know that, hey, this is still, we're still working on it. It's still happening. Things are, you know, there's really positive action here.
Yeah, so we did some work. Um, the strategic plan document is the, what Strategy Matters gave us, just to give you a little concept, is about fifteen pages long. So over the summer, we spent some time kind of drilling that down into, I think we have a two-page document, front and backside, that we worked on, uh, over the summer. And to condense everything that we're doing, and then we had this presentation tonight. I also, for context, presented this at convocation to the entire faculty and staff that was, um, at convocation this year. So we talked about it there. So we're slowly starting to roll it out and put it in people's hands. It will go up on our website, but I wanted to put some context around it first tonight. And then that will be the next logical step to put it on our website. So let me go on to the second goal. And the second goal is around, um, exploring, uh, well, it's around continually refining our approach to engaging families, caregivers, and the wider community. What we decided this summer, um, kind of fits in with something I know that was mentioned earlier in the meeting tonight. Exploring and expanding transportation options to ensure equitable access to East Hampton Public Schools programs and services. So one of the things that we have been discussing, um, I think it was Julian Levin in my office heard from, what did she hear? From Ann Tally and Jenny? Jenny?
Papa George.
Papa George, yeah. I know I was going to mess up that last name. Um, and, um, so she came to me and she wants to, we're going to be forming a committee, a transportation study committee, um, that will be meeting over the course of this year, probably beginning in October. And one of the things we want to do first is begin a series of surveys to not only families, but also our educators to find out, you know, what the needs are and when people need transportation, what that might look like, how many people might be interested. And then we'll, of course, reach out to the bus company, do a cost analysis of that with them. So we have a plan for the year that's, um, starting to come together. And, uh, we'll be putting together a committee and we will have external folks on that committee. Julian Levin may lead, lead it, or Nick Burnier, the business manager, who has a kind of a, a hand in transportation, if you will, may lead that committee. They may do it jointly. I know Jean Libby has expressed an interest in being on that committee. So, um, that's an area where we know that there are people that want to kind of jump in and do some of the work. So we want to get that rolling out. So that's the area of focus for goal two this year.
That's great. It's exciting to hear.
Well, I think the mayor is coming back in.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And the third goal um, is probably the biggest undertaking for us, ensuring ongoing commitment to our mission and equity work. Um, so we're focusing on three different action steps. The first one is to, to develop a common understanding of equity in the context of the East Hampton Public Schools. This will include considering the ways in which aspects of an individual's identity influence their learning and their experience within our school culture. As you know, we've done equity work for many years, particularly at the high school, but we've done it also at the lower levels with our equity committees. But we have discerned through some of the, um, survey data that we've received back over the course of the year for the strategic planning is that people have different perspectives about what equity means. So we need to come up with some common understandings about what equity is. Um, ensure the professional development priorities are aligned with and uphold our mission and examine our assessments to ensure that they're aligned with our common understanding of equity. Um, to help us with some of this work, and this kind of goes back to, um, Ben's question about kind of who is going to be leading the work, um, I would say for this, uh, this particular goal, Julie, Julian and I, um, have been, um, we applied for, um, seats in a academy at the education, at the Department of Education level and the Mass Association of School Superintendents. They're rolling out a new course called Foundations. Um, and it's around, um, racial equity, inclusiveness, and diversity. And Julian and I applied for the, um, uh, seats in this year-long course and we were accepted into the program. So we'll be working on that and we'll have a lot to, we're one of the first cohorts in the state to undergo this training. So we'll be working really closely with, um, experts across the state in a year-long course. So, uh, with a cohort of superintendents and assistant superintendents. And we'll be bringing back what we learn to the school district and kind of unpacking some of that as we go along. We'll still continue our collaboration with the collaborative in North Hampton. We still have a contract with them and they work very closely with Cindy Mojica at the high school and Julian Levin in our central office. So that's a big undertaking for us that we continue to be dedicated to. And our last, um, goal around advocacy, we want to work on developing a compelling communication and advocacy strategy that clearly articulates what the district will need in terms of financial resources, staffing, and facilities to achieve its goals. Again, I think this is something that will be, um, open to external stakeholders that want to step in and support us in this work. We know from our budget season last year, we have a lot of people invested in this advocacy work. So, um, I think we really want to tap into their expertise, if there is expertise among that group, and, um, see if we can get some people to work with us in a small group setting over the course of the year to help develop our message. So those are our four big goals that came out of our strategic work last year. This will be going up on our website. Um, does anyone have any questions? Lori? I think Lori was first, or the mayor. I don't know which one.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Leclair. I appreciate the detailed explanation of the goals that you all have reached, and I know it's been an arduous task and a long time putting it together. I do hope that you will consider in the strategic plan to ensure curricula is aligned to the guiding principles, to promote equity, um, an individual's identity, influence their learning. All of these things coincide with a goal that many have in this community to see a dual-language program. So I, I want, um, the school committee to know that Dr. Leclair feels that the dual-language program, it is not a focus of this strategic, strategic plan. You all know that there are many community members that have contacted us for many years about our, um, lack of good world language education, the fact that we don't have upper levels, we don't have AP levels, we've eliminated the program from the middle school. And starting a program at the elementary level would not be a burden on the budget because it would be instead of a regular class. So I just want to bring that to everyone's attention, that at this time, when we are talking about the strategic plan for our community, that we should all consider and be a united voice. It should not be my voice, as Dr. Leclair has told me. It should be a united voice for dual-language. And Julian and I spent three very worthwhile days in a conference with the Center of Applied Linguistics. Dr. Leclair supported our mission to attend that seminar, but then I was told that it's not in immediate plans. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Just to, just to clarify, thank you, Lori. I, I think it is worth exploring. I think it is worth, you know, having in our mind, but of the surveys that we collected and the information that came in, I will say that in general, this is a general statement, people in East Hampton are very satisfied with the education their children receive. And I didn't hear, um, a lot of condemnation about certain aspects of the curriculum that were in a deficit. So I want to be clear, um, about that. The second point I would make is our, um, our ELL numbers have been stagnant. They have been flat in the last few years. We have not had a lot of growth. And I was under the, the thinking that we would trigger or move to a dual-language program when we reached a certain threshold of students in the district that were ELL students. And that number really has not tipped greatly yet. We had five ELL students in kindergarten this year. Not a huge number, so we are still considered on the lower side of ELL. Do I think there are benefits to a dual-language program? I absolutely do. Do I think that it should be triggered at a certain point? And then when we have enrollment that are ELL-focused, I, I think possibly it does, but I could be wrong. And, you know, I think that it's just a topic that there are many other things that we're focused on right now. And I want to make sure that we're paying attention to the goals that are identified by the stakeholders in the district.
I, I appreciate that reply, but most know that a dual-language program does not have to be fifty-fifty. It does not have to be based on the number of students learning English as their second language. What it does, and there are many communities, for many years Milton, Holliston had bilingual immersion programs that didn't have any focus on students who were studying ESL. But these communities value that we have a global community and it's important to speak other languages. I was thrilled tonight to hear someone else speaking Spanish. Cindy came on. I had no idea she was going to be doing that. Of course, she's bilingual. And that's what we value and having her as our diversity coordinator. Wouldn't it be wonderful as a community to promote bilingualism in all of our residents? Wouldn't it be wonderful as a community to promote bilingualism in all of our residents and all of our children? They don't have to be children coming here without the ability to speak English. We need to have a drive to educate our students to speak the second most spoken language in this country and throughout the world. So I'm not going to give up on this and I'm not going to be told I'm the only voice. And I also participated in many calls of that strategic plan. And I did talk about our lack of world language education. And I also know that the questions were skewed a certain way that they wouldn't ask people, do you want to see more language programs? Would you like children to learn at an earlier language, at an earlier age? Or why are so many of our community members going to schools outside of the community to look for more? I don't, I want to choose my words carefully because I'm very happy with the education we provide in East Hampton. But I know that we can do better and we can do more.
Okay, Megan?
I have a, excuse me, a point of clarification. And I think Laurie essentially just answered it, but I just wanted, just so we have a shared understanding of this and that anyone watching now or later would understand too. When you're talking about a dual language program, you're talking about parents would get to choose whether or not they would want their child to be in this program. And for the children in the program, regardless of their first language, they would be learning immersion style in two languages. Is that, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly. So it was an equal opportunity for a English-speaking households to have their child learn. Yeah. As a parent, that sounds amazing. I love that idea. Not like it's a brand new idea. I know you've been working really hard on it, but I just, I think it has a lot of value. And so I just wanted to sort of tack on to this. I think multiple of these goals that you just went over, which are great. I love the way they're worded and the the mission and the vision of what we're striving for. To me, I know we have experts in the community. I would love to build on that with Ben's idea from last meeting, two meetings ago with the curriculum committee, subcommittee part of the school committee. I think that would be a great way for parents to have input. I just want to re-put out there that I hope that that will keep coming back to this as part of the discussion.
Ben?
I think, I think actually Megan more or less asked the question I was asking, I was going to ask, which is just like, what would it look like? You know, a general sense of like, I'm curious why it's, it's difficult to enact something like this. You know, I'd like to hear more about it, but you know, and that's all. I think she just kind of tapped into that question though for me.
So Laurie, what if you and Julianne did a presentation on a future agenda, just what a dual language program would look like?
That's a wonderful idea. And Julianne did tell me when we did this in July that she would be setting up a focus group and I was hoping that would take place in September. It looks like September is almost over. I guess it's not almost over, but I would hope that by the beginning of October, Julianne will put that in place. And that could be part of our presentation.
It is on her radar, Laurie.
So do you think that you could work with Julianne to put together a presentation? Okay.
I think the mayor wanted to say something.
Yeah, I promise. Okay, Mayor?
Uh, okay. Thank you. So I actually have questions about the strategic plan.
Yeah.
Um, and I agree, it's very ambitious and, and guides. So the, the question that I have is like, what's the, like, what's the timeline? And of those goals in the integration into the district plan? That's one. And, and related is how do you, like the common understanding of equity? How, how do you measure that? How do you ensure that? Those are kind of related. But, but those are my questions around the, the plan.
So the strategic plan, when we contracted with Strategy Matters, we said we wanted a three to five-year strategic plan, which is the norm for strategic plans. So we have a five-year strategic plan, which is our roadmap. So the goals will be the same for the next five years, but the action steps may grow or shift or change entirely depending on what we need to focus on. So some of the action steps that are listed tonight may be completed after one year. But some of them, like evaluating our curriculum, may be multiple years. That may be an action step. That's a multi-year action step. So we'll, you'll see those action steps kind of continue on or drop off and new ones take their place. And what was your second question? I'm sorry, I lost it.
How do you, well, actually it
The equity, the equity question. Yeah.
Yeah. Or how do you know you met a goal?
So we will measure it in various ways. We'll measure our curriculum against the the curriculum audit materials from the Department of Ed, for example. You know, the advocacy, we'll know it if we are able to obtain the budgets we need moving forward, you know? That will be a measure of our success with the equity work. The transportation, we're looking at, you know, what is it that the community needs in the area of transportation? And how do we, how are we able to provide it if we can provide it? And maybe it looks like we only get this far this year, but maybe next year is our goal is to go a little bit further, you know? One thing we're thinking of, I'll give you a specific example. You know, we have programs that are looking to run after school at the middle school. They have run, but the challenge is that there are students that can't access programs after school because they, we don't currently have transportation. Is that an equity issue? Yes, it absolutely is an equity issue. So how might we address that? One way that we might address it this year is thinking about could we provide transportation one day a week, two days a week? And maybe for the most popular clubs, maybe they shift to just those two days a week. So that we can start off incrementally and see what the ridership is. See the number of families that are able to access it. Survey families, survey students to find out, are you, are you able to now, excuse me, access this program because transportation is available? So that's how we'll, we'll know if that's working and if we need to prioritize going further with it next year. You know, our work around equity, I think it will be through collaboration with a lot of key stakeholders. The ready work Julianne and I are doing, the work with the collaborative, you know, the Department of Education is putting out documents with definitions of equity, you know, and, and of course you can find multiple definitions online. So what is a community are we going to accept as our definition of equity? And how are we measuring that progress throughout the year, surveying students at the end of the school year, surveying staff, you know, different things like that? And what is our focus in equity? So we'll have a gauge as we go through the year, but I don't think the work will be done in isolation. I think it will be with input from a lot of key stakeholders on various committees and groups.
Yeah, thank you. That was my, those are my questions and congratulations to both you and Julianne to get into the foundations course. Those, I've been through a lot of those in my past life and they're very, they're very rich and in intense. So it's hard to get in. It's not an automatic. So congratulations.
Great. So I thank you for the strategic plan. I think that that's really important. I'm getting back just to Laurie's thoughts. And my question is, how about November? For an agenda, can you make, you think a presentation could be done in November?
Cindy, if I could just, can I just interject one second? Yep. The, I just wanted to say for Laurie, the November, November for a presentation is fine. But the current date, and we're going to get to it under a section down below, the current meeting date is scheduled on November 8th, which actually is election day. And I know that you don't all like to meet on voting days. So I, I didn't want Laurie to say yes to a date and then we change it on her. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you. That, that can be a conflict. So.
Good thought. So, um.
Well, I don't know if you, and there's only one meeting date in November. I mean, we don't have to, if you, if you want to dig into it now, we can. I don't know.
I'd like to speak, I'd like to speak to Julianne and get her input because I really feel that Julianne has been so supportive this whole time. And I consider her to be an active voice in this endeavor. And I, I'd like to speak with her. I'd like to see when we're going to get a focus group together. Maybe it's good to present after meeting with the focus group. I, I just want it on everyone's radar. Because once again, I don't want to be la única voz, the only voice. Thank you.
So why don't we do this? Do you think you could get back to us on our October 11th meeting? And, you know, we have had time at least to talk to Julianne to start to have a vision. The reason is, I mean, you've been talking about this for a long time. It's hard for the community and the school committee and everybody involved to get a really clear picture as to what's going on unless it's given time to really be presented and talked about and have people ask questions. So do you think you could get back on the 11th and we can come up with a few more time?
And you know, the timeline has changed so much when Julianne and I were first discussing this, it was pre-pandemic. And we had talked about, wouldn't it be amazing to open up our first dual language kindergarten class in the new school? We had actually signed up for a conference in Boston with the Mass Association of Bilingual Educators. We were going to go to Holyoke. That was all happening in 2020 in the spring. Obviously that all shut down. So when we were so involved with COVID, I said, there's no way we're going to open it the first year. So I did speak to Dr. Leclerc, to Julianne, and we said, well, we can plan it and we can really hope to start it the following year. And then all of a sudden it seemed like the carpet was pulled out, the strategic plan is coming. I'm not supposed to discuss it right now. I just, and I want to bring it to the public because I'm a very open person. And I know how many people have said, please let me be part of that focus group. Please, my children would love to be in that program. It's something that so many people want and so many people would benefit from. And I know that we've had problems with the budget, but I also know listening to all of the educators who are involved and most of them were administrators who was participating in that conference. And to hear, for example, that a town in Georgia has had a very successful dual language program for 14 years and we can't even start one here in East Hampton. That was very, it was unbelievable to me. You know, Georgia, there were people from all over the country talking about how they benefit test scores. It's not just for the ESL kids. It's for the kids who benefit from speaking two languages. And it's just, it's a win-win situation as far as I'm concerned. So thank you, Cindy. I will speak with Julianne and I'll report on October 11th when we can present. So thank you.
That's great. And Mary, raise your hand. Up here on you.
Um, actually, to just go back to the strategic plan and then before that, the social emotional learning. Is there, you know, this is more of a curiosity question, but with all of the current research and past research about the value of SEL and then we see it coming up in our strategic plan. I guess what's the, the balance, right? Like, at what point does SEL come before maybe typical curriculum routine to, to to lift the students to a place where they feel confident? And I don't know if Desi is looking at that mix. I mean, I know there's always time and learning and, you know, getting ready for MCAS and things that have to be taught. And where's the, the space for that SEL stuff that like I feel is very important, but now it's in our strategic plan and, and we're seeing it you know, across our, our department from, from teachers and, and just your report out.
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think that, you know, our take on that in general is that students cannot access the curriculum unless they're in the right frame of mind. You know, unless they've, they've had food in the morning, unless they, you know, had a good night's sleep the night before. If things are going well in their home life, you know, we know that these are all factors that impact a child's access to the curriculum. So it's really, there are two kind of prongs to the SEL. It's embedded really across content areas, but it's also a standalone curriculum as well. So there might, there might be little things that they do in the middle of a class, like let's get up and let's get the wiggles out. Let's take some deep breaths, you know? Just some, learning some strategies for how to calm down and that sort of thing that might be embedded in a math class. But then there's also some standalone curriculum that we're using as well. But I think it's really the the pinnacle of the work that we're doing right now, particularly after the pandemic. It's really apparent to us that there are students that are just not, they're not, even in the first few weeks of school, we know that there are children that are not yet ready to access the curriculum because they can't even sit still in a classroom yet. So, you know, there are children that, it's going to take several years to recover from the pandemic. And we're seeing little, little, little ones that have not ever been in a classroom yet. And they're really struggling socially. They're struggling. They're struggling with societal norms about ways to behave in a classroom. And so there's really a lot for us to bite off and really dig into there before students can access the curriculum.
With the expansion of the mental health screening, it, it kind of reminds me what, like getting the wiggles out and, and whatnot. It, it almost reminds me of a response to intervention, you know, program where you're seeing where, and, and please correct, I guess I'm asking this, you know, if I'm following it, that, you know, what, what level of intervention students need using the screening tool or a screening tool, but also how they are in the classroom. And, and I think that's what I'm hearing from you around embedded and then also standalone intervention. Is that kind of?
Yes, yes. And we have tiered levels of support. You know, which is again, the Desi model of tiered, tiered interventions, the MTSS model. So there are strategies that the classroom educator has in their toolkit. And then the next level up, you know, are strategies that maybe teacher that pulls students out would have in their toolkit, you know? Then we also have strategies that counselors, people that have specialized education would have in their toolbox. So we have different layers of support for students.
Thank you.
Megan, did you put your hand up again?
I did. Yes. I just wanted to, I, I think that you've said this, Dr. Leclerc, but in this SEL embedded and standalone curriculum stuff, is it, it's trauma-informed, given that every single one of us has been through collective trauma?
Yes, we've done a lot of trauma-informed work at all levels.
Great.
So should I shift now to preliminary enrollment numbers?
I think so.
Okay. So I think you received a hand up.
I think it is. Right. One more question, one more question. So I just wanted a follow-up question. So if we had this idea for the curriculum committee, how does it ever like go somewhere? Is that something that one of us at some point would put forward a motion and that's voted on? Is that something Dr. Leclerc has to decide that she is interested in? Like, how, what is the process for?
Not me. It's not me. But remember, I would say, and Cindy would probably say this as well. If you are creating a subcommittee, just like finance, just like policy, it would need to be, you'd need to have members from the committee on, on that committee. And you would need to have a posted agenda. You'd need to have public speak. So you'd need to have it conducted like your finance subcommittee, like your policy subcommittee. So I would just remind you of that. And I don't think you can have a quorum. That's the other piece. Cindy, am I captioning that correctly? Yeah.
Yeah, you are. So are you talking about the curriculum, a curriculum committee?
Yeah. So this was, maybe I should let Ben take over. This was Ben's suggestion during another a meeting ago or two meetings ago. And I, I really liked this idea and it seems to fit into this discussion. Well, Ben, I'll turn it over. discussion. Well, Ben, I'll turn it over.
I mean, this is the question, how do we solidify it and make it legitimate so that it exists within the context of committees, subcommittees that we have? Um, I, I, I wrote, Julianne wrote to me and said that she's, she's presenting, uh, a next meeting in October. Um, and she thought maybe we could use that meeting to recruit interested people. Um, and then perhaps aim to have a meeting in November, um, which sounds great. Um, just, I just want to make sure it happens. Like, it's super easy for these things to get continuously pushed back. So, um, I was curious if it's like, do we, do we get members and then vote on the existence of a curriculum committee? Or do we vote for it first? Like, what's the process for how to make it so that we could start this?
I think you have to create, you have to vote to create the committee first, then assign, members have to go through Cindy, the chair, if they'd like to be part of it, I think.
So I'm a little confused. Um, the school district is looking through curriculum with administrators and teachers.
Yes, we would have our own internal curriculum committees. That's stuff we're already doing. So Ben is asking us to do another piece of that.
Right. But, but it really wouldn't have a school committee, we wouldn't have a committee, a school committee members just meeting with Julianne to talk about curriculum. I think what you're actually talking about forming is, uh, like a parent advisory group looking at curriculum. If, if I'm understanding you right, that would be where you would meet, say, with a principal and various teachers and then members from the community to talk about looking and adding curriculum and then make suggestions to the school. Is that what you're looking at? Because the school committee does not, um, we do not create the curriculum for the district. We can have an advisory group. We could have a parent advisory group, a community group, whatever we want to call it, to reach out and, and generate conversations and suggestions. But I think we have to stay within the purview of what we really, um, oversee.
And to build on your point, Cindy, if Ben, say, was in charge of that committee, just like Baron's in charge of finance, Ben would have to put together an agenda 48 hours ahead of time, post it, you know, get the meeting set up, send out the invites. That would be on him as the chair of that committee. If there wasn't a posted agenda, you couldn't hold the meeting.
Right. I, I, there's definite, like, rules to getting it going and setting up, uh, meetings. But just so you know,
I think we're using the wrong word. I think we really need to talk about an advisory group.
No, what I'm talking about is something different where it's, it's the equivalent of, of a budget committee or a, or a policy subcommittee. And this exists all over the state. There are dozens of districts that have this. They have a list of things they try to do. Essentially, in a way, it's kind of what you had in the first couple of, uh, goals for the, from the strategic plan, uh, related to curriculum. Um, you know, things like ensuring, uh, the alignment of, uh, the curriculum with the educational philosophy of the district, things like that, like.
So Ben, could you share with us some of those materials that, because
Yeah.
my understanding is we're kind of stepping out of bounds.
This is not radical.
It might not be radical, but I, I need to just kind of make sure that we're in alignment with where we should be. So I got information from you, then we could contact the, um, Massachusetts Association of School Committees and get some guidance there as to what we would call it and how we would run that. Um, so if you want to share information.
Yeah. Do you want me to send it to you? Or I can send it to everybody? I mean.
And to Dr. Leclerc, but certainly I don't want to box anybody out, um, from getting information. So I think it would be great to have you share it with everybody. But, um, thank you. Mayor and Megan, they're all signaling yes. So, um, if you shared it with all of us, but then I think we really need to look at what we call it and how we design that before we have another conversation on that. Does that make sense?
Um, sure. I mean, this is, I, I, I think.
I, I am aware of many parent community advisory groups that meet within schools that look at curriculum, that look at different things, including policy. Um, but it is not, it's not a school committee, committee. It is a parent and, and community advisory. So it's like a partnership between the school and the parents to look at those issues. That I see all the time. So I would just want to be able to check into all this before we start generating too much conversation. I'm not, I, I just am not familiar with, with it being done.
No problem. I, I, I can tell you, I just, it took me like an hour. I found like 25 districts across the state that have one of these. Um, and they work, you know, just to do these basic kind of interaction between the curriculum and the, and the school committee. But we could talk more about it. I can send you all that info for sure.
Thank you. That'd be great. Megan?
Yeah, I wondered if, based on what we're, we're saying here, if it, what makes sense is that if Ben doesn't mind heading this up, getting that information out, can we put it on the agenda for next meeting? Then we can have an open, public discussion about whether or not we want to do this, ask questions, see if we can get answers from our, um, expert who looked at that then, and then, and then decide if we want to, in fact, go this advisory group or an actual subcommittee or whatever.
So, um, you're thinking October 11th, everybody will have had the information. Um, I'll have time to contact M A O C. Um, I don't have a problem with it being on the agenda.
That's when Julianne is, uh, is, is presenting, I think. And so we could tie it in with what she's doing. That'd be interesting. As, you know, she's central to this conversation.
She's doing MCAS, um, results that night.
Okay. So you, yeah. So you can get that information out to us ASAP, right?
Yep. Be glad to.
Hi. That sounds good. Do you want to go on to preliminary enrollment now?
Sure. Um, so you have the enrollment data in your packet from Sue Colby. And, um, it's not a surprise that our enrollment has gone up a little bit. You know, it's, um, we're coming out of the other side of the pandemic. More people are enrolled. Um, the coming out of homeschooling and coming back to school. Um, and we also opened up a new school. So everybody is banging down the door to get into the new school. So, um, so we're, our numbers are, are pretty good. We're getting back up there and we're higher than we were um, last year at this time. So, um, I guess I would just ask questions if anyone has any questions. Um, our, our kindergarten numbers turned out a little bit higher than we anticipated. Um, and it was unfortunately kind of right at the end of the summer. And, um, I, I probably haven't said this vocally to this group, but, um, we worked hard to get every teacher hired in the school district this year. And we started with just one part-time teacher missing at the high school. Our elementary school was fully staffed. And so, um, that took us right up until the end. And most school districts could not say that. Um, so it was not really in the cards for us to bring on another teacher. We were really spread pretty, pretty thin at the end. Um, and, and just for your own information, we were able this year through the Department of Education's emergency licensure to elevate several of our paraeducators with bachelor's degrees to classroom teachers, which is, I always think it's a positive thing when you can build capacity from within your organization because those folks are known entities and they're dedicated to your school district. So I have a lot to say about, um, building capacity within an organization. It was actually the subject of my dissertation. I'll talk to anyone about that. But, um, we were fortunate to do that in our district. So, um, we were really in a good space with our staffing numbers at the start of the school year.
Any questions? Mayor? May I ask?
Hello. Okay. There we go. Um, one, so with the pre-K numbers, those seem, I know at one point we had closed or closed a, um, a classroom or, or whatnot. And I see the number of 31 and I'm, I'm just trying to figure out that seemed, I, I didn't expect it. I think we started, I don't know how many spaces we have, but I was surprised to see 31.
We, um, you're right. You're right, Mayor. A couple of years ago, right before the pandemic, we dropped one of the full-time classes at Maple because of low enrollment. And, um, now as we're coming out of the pandemic, we have a lot of children that are looking for spots in our preschool programs. So we added a preschool teacher. Um, I think it's funded through grants. It's not funded through the city budget. Um, but we added a full day preschool classroom at Mountain View this year. So that's why the numbers are appearing a little bit higher. We really, coming out of the pandemic last year, um, boy, did we need a full day program for preschoolers. They really needed a full day option and we didn't have it. So, um, we had to bring that back. It was really critical for that age group to have a full day option.
Um, and, and with the numbers on, like, Smith, including Smith-Vogue or whatnot, the high school numbers include the CTEC students because of the way that day is structured. We still have students.
Correct. Yes. They are our students for half a day. So they are included in the numbers. Smith-Vogue students pretty much leave our district every day. They are not included in our numbers. We don't kind of technically own them in our numbers anymore.
Okay. And then when I looked at the, and I, I just don't, I remember we went through this, the budget season, the timing of numbers and what Desi has on their, their website and, and whatnot. Um, so there, they have us at 88.5% of our students choose public. Um, and, and they're, they're saying total public is 1538. And the total number of students, like, available for education are 1720. So even though those numbers might be a little bit behind or not, I'm assuming the difference between 1538 and 1730 are school choice out, charter, parochial. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then when they're saying, when, when we come out as being down 22 students, we've lost 22 students. Um, I, I don't know if you are, how does that compare to pre-pandemic? I mean, it seems that number is a little not, not false, but just, it would be different if we didn't have a pandemic. I don't think we would be losing 22 students.
Right. So that number is based on last year's data because the numbers that I'm sharing with you right now, tonight, go into the October 1st report that we submit to the Department of Education. So you can see the actual number, which I think is, I don't know, Sue might be able to tell me, but we will, Sue was looking at it the other day and it was higher than last year. I don't know if it was 10 students or 20 students.
Yeah.
But we have made up a lot of that ground from last year. I, I don't know if it's all because of pandemic, as you mentioned, or if it's because we have a shiny new building and, you know, less kids are leaving. So, um, or people are pulling their kids back from other schools.
And the, um, yeah, because when I looked at choice, the number of choice we received in '22, as well as the number of students who are going out, the trend is both in, in both categories is trending down. And, and I do remember that.
I couldn't accept as many school choice students this year because I didn't have space.
Yeah.
Mountain View, if you look at the numbers right here, um, and, you know, the, the counterbalance is the classrooms at Mountain View can hold 25 students.
Right.
You, as a school committee, have given me the directive, you don't want 25 students. So I can't fill those rooms up to 25. So to keep them in the number range that you are looking for with students coming back into the district from, as the mayor noted, school choice, parochial charter, with students coming back, I had very few, um, Mountain View school choice slots. I had a lot of applicants, but very few spaces.
And that's a follow-up question. As we see the more students in, like, East Hampton, like, that would just, this, we're their home district, with the number of school choice N going for, forward, like, how do we balance that? I noted, like, that the total number of, of students in our new school, it's, it's over a thousand. Like, it's 1018. So how many of the 1018 are school choice? And, and how do we solve the, the issue as more students say, hey, I want to come back. It's a shiny new school or whatever. They're, whatever the reason. How do you balance that?
Yeah. And what I would say is that, once we, once we take on a student in school choice, they stay with us for their entire career. We can't at some point say, oh, sorry, we don't have any more room in that grade anymore. You're out. So we have to make very strategic um, decisions about school choice. So we look at our class numbers and we say, do we have capacity at that grade level? And we have to think, okay, if we take this student now in, you know, if you look at first grade, I have 105 students in there right now. Classes are small. Uh, well, small-ish. They're around what you want them to be. I probably would say safely, I didn't really take any first graders this year. However, maybe once they get into third grade, I might take one or two because we're allowing for a few more students in grade three. But once I own them, I own them from third grade all the way through 12. So I have to be really careful. So, uh, I, I think that as a school committee, you're going to see less school choice in the coming years.
That make, okay, I follow that. The, um, uh, and so the other, um,
And of course, the, the wild card is we take very, very few school choice, if any, in kindergarten. And we don't decide until the last minute because, you know, the first grade number is a number I know.
Yep.
And I know it might fluctuate by three or four students, but I know that number. It's a known entity to me. Kindergarten, I can look at live births in the city of East Hampton. That doesn't tell me anything about who's going to walk in the door because people move in and out of town. So I could get 20 kids two weeks before the start of school. So it's really hard. It's an unknown.
And, and then when you look at the high school numbers, would it be more likely that we have, like, you would put more school choice slots in not, grades nine and 10?
Yes.
Um, and then the, I, I only have two more questions. Um, okay. So I also noticed that, all right, the, for low income enrollment, it used to be the measurement, um, like, prior, uh, it used to be the measurement of 133% under poverty levels. And that was considered economically disadvantaged. So now the, the state has gone to 185%, um, which was the number before fiscal year 17. Does that bring in additional resources like help with their school lunch or Title I? Or does that, does that make difference, I guess, in money?
So, and, and Nick may want to jump in, but the answer is yes. So you know that, you know, we've got the whole free school lunch again this year. However, we are still, we are asking families to fill out the free and reduced school lunch application, particularly if they fall in that economically disadvantaged category because it impacts our Title I dollars. So we need families to fill that out. But the other piece of it is that, um, any of our fees automatically would get adjusted. If someone has free lunch, we're not going to charge them athletic fees or parking fees. So, you know, there, there are pieces of information that have domino effects in the district. And that would be true of all, all school districts. in the district. And that would be true of all, all school districts. But, but to answer your question, yes.
I, I was surprised to look at, kind of related to that, when I looked at the state map around low income and, and what group you fall into. We were in group eight, which is between forty-two and forty-seven point nine-nine percent low income. So the last time I remember looking at that, we were around thirty percent or thirty-two percent. I'm just, I'm just wondering, do you, is that, you think, related to COVID and folks, like, having inconsistent employment and, and whatnot?
We started to see that shift a little bit right before COVID in certain demographic neighborhoods in East Hampton. Particularly, I don't know if you recall this, but at Maple Elementary, that school qualified for free meals because of their poverty designation in that area. But other schools in the district did not. Now that we're kind of all coming together in one school, we're hovering around the forty to forty-eight percent. And what we are attributing that to, to some degree, is, as you noted, the pandemic. You know, there are people's, people's financial situation has changed. Their family's situation has changed for a variety of factors, but it has impacted a lot of families in our community. A lot of families are struggling.
And then, the last question is about the charter school reimbursement. So the, I forget where, I'm probably in MMA webinar. So they're talking about the legislature prefunded some of the Student Opportunity Act when it came to charter schools. So I was trying to follow what the differences were, but does that help us with the number of kids who are, are going to charter schools?
I don't have the answer for that. And I can pose that question to Nick. He can maybe reach out to his counterparts to answer that, but I don't have that information. Our Student Opportunity Act funding was, I forget what it was this year, Nick, it was less than forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was so, well, that's why I'm asking, because I remember
Significant, yeah.
Yeah, everybody was like, oh, this is so much, and I just
Other communities get hundreds of thousands of dollars, we're getting nothing, yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if that, yeah, what, what the, the change of that. That's all I had. Thank you.
Any questions about that? Um, so I just have a quick question. So if we're looking at the high school's numbers, are you considering, did you open up extra positions? And do you have an idea of how many in each grade? I mean, some of the
Did I open up, like, extra school choice fee?
Yeah.
Is that what you mean? We, we opened up school choice in, in ninth and tenth grade. We didn't, we, we took what we had.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a waitlist.
Okay.
Yeah. The eighth grade, which is the current, let me stop, let me say that. This current class of ninth graders has been small all through their journey.
Yeah.
And you'll notice, some classes are big. There are a lot of live, a lot of births that year. Some classes are low. This class, the current ninth-grade class, has been low for several years. So we've, we've added school choice students in that grade level all along the way, because it has been a low class. And we have higher classes coming behind it. If you look at this year's current eighth grade, you'll see, you know, so you have to keep shifting with it.
All right. Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you.
All right. So now, we have Director of Business Services Updates.
Good evening, everyone. I've just got a brief update from the, the business office. You heard from me at the last meeting, and, you know, typically, I would only give one of these a month, but, well, technically, our last meeting was last one, so here you go. So the first item, and you received my report in your, your packet, so you should have it. We received in mid-August an FY twenty-two mask purchase reimbursement, which nobody really knew was coming. So that was sort of a surprise. Digging into it a little bit, we, we determined it was part of Governor Baker's Acts of two thousand twenty-two, where basically, an appropriation was given to school districts across the Commonwealth to reimburse them for mask purchases that took place only in fiscal year twenty-two. I think a lot of it had to do with, you may recall the masks that Desi supplied school districts right around the holiday season last year, which, I guess, it turned out were not as high-quality as originally advertised. I, I don't know if you remember that happening, but I, I clearly do. Last year, when I was working in North Hampton. So as a result of that, many districts, you know, purchased their own masks to, you know, to get better quality ones. So responding to that, the governor did put aside an appropriation to reimburse districts. However, we, we were basically told that if we spent less on masks than the reimbursement amount, the difference had to be sent back to the state, which we did. We reimbursed a total of thirteen thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. However, we only spent, according to the records that I, I was able to find here, a little under five thousand on masks in fiscal year twenty-two. I, I think the bulk of the masks the district purchased were in FY twenty-one, when students returned to in-person learning. So, you know, we would have to send quite a bit back. Couple of weeks ago, the folks from the Desi Finance Office held a webinar, because people had a lot of questions about, you know, where do we deposit this? What do we do with it? You know, just general things. And the webinar, you know, basically told us to, to stay tuned. Desi is working with the state legislature to see if the remainder of the balance could be used for mask purchases for this coming year, or for the year we're in now, rather. We have not received official word on that right now, so the money is just kind of sitting there. I didn't send any back, obviously, after the webinar. But if we were able to have the rest of it, it would have to be spent on masks and masks only. So, which we would certainly, we could use. You know, our nurses' office still require them, you know, even though masks are not required in, in schools. And, and, you know, frankly, some folks still want to wear them. So we certainly would, you know, purchase masks. Whether we would purchase eight thousand of them, or dollars worth, I don't know. But in any event, I, I hope maybe by our October meeting to be able to give you more information on that. We also do have to provide a report of what types of masks were purchased, as well as how many, which I have, and, and the records I found for what, you know, was purchased so far. And I, I certainly, of course, if we bought more, we would have that. I don't think that report will be too difficult. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that, that we received the reimbursement, and there will be more information forthcoming on it. I am still currently working to complete the end-of-the-year financial report for Desi. At, at the publication of my report to you, it said I've gathered most of the information I need. I'm now going to change that to, I've gathered almost all of the information I need. I, there's one piece left that I'm just waiting on, that I, you know, need to complete part of it. Other than that, I have everything I need. It's just a matter of parsing the numbers out the way the report requires you to, and then filling it in. I would say that I'm on good track to get it done by the due date. I've got Schedule III done, which is the instructional piece of it, which includes all of your school committee spending, as well as grants and revolving accounts, and, and every gift, gift accounts, everything like that. That probably, I would say, takes the most time that's done. So the rest of it is, is just, you know, the bits and pieces, and then make sure everything balances the way that it should. Soon after I finish, I will be sending you, Chair, a paper you have to sign. I have to mail it to the state afterwards. I'm sure you've signed it before. But, you know, we can certainly touch base when the time comes about how you want to come in and do that. And then, the last, the last part of my, my report tonight is just a short personnel report. When I gave my updates in my prior district, I would always include a, a personnel report each, each month. So this one is, is for the summer. It includes July and August. It does not include anybody that was hired or had separated after, or after August thirty-first. You've received the, the report, so you can see names and positions and locations and everything. But, you know, we're happy to report, piggybacking on what Dr. Leclair said, we hired twenty-one new staff members over the summer, which left us almost completely fully staffed, which is certainly something many other districts, including, you know, districts where business managers that I talked to frequently work in. I mean, there are still, some of them twenty, twenty-five paraeducators short. It's, I would consider us very lucky to be where we are staff-wise. You know, I've worked in a few districts, and I've seen, I've seen both sides. I, I would certainly consider us in a good spot. During the course of the summer, we had eleven separations, you know, various staff members in various roles had separated. And then, there were seven transfers as well, folks working in the district, moving to another role within the district. Current vacancies, well, as of, of last week, we had two paraeducators at Mountain View, although that number may be up to three now, as the, the meeting was delayed a week. The part-time health teacher that Dr. Leclair referenced earlier at the high school, a paraeducator at the high school, a custodian at Mountain View, the IT director can come off the list. We offered the position to somebody last week, and he accepted it. He will start, I believe, the day after Indigenous Peoples' Day. I, I think October eleventh, this is starting date. And then, still trying to fill a part-time Special Education Office Admin Assistant. But, you know, all in all, not too, too many vacancies at all. So that's my business office report. I know that there are a couple of items added to the agenda, like, afterwards. In, you know, I, I don't know if Dr. Leclair wants to discuss this with me, or if I'm running the show here, or if, if anybody has any questions about my, my business office report before we move on to those things.
Back to Leclair?
Sure. I'll jump into letter C. So we, we're asking, Nick and I are asking for the committee to take a revote of the FY twenty-twenty-three budget amount to align with the budget amount approved by the city council, which is five hundred and sixty thousand dollars less than what this committee approved. And I'm, I'm not, not trying to cause a stir. We are hoping to go to the city council to ask for an appropriation. However, in the management of the funds that we currently have, if you will all recall, last year, you had to revote because your budget was seven cents different than the city budget in the, the budget number in the budget book. And now, your budget is five hundred and sixty thousand dollars off. So, so really, when we began exploring how to put our, set our budget up in our account system, we really ran into some challenges. And Nick consulted with the Department of Education, who, Jay Sullivan, who is the director of their finance department over there, I don't know his specific title.
Associate Commissioner.
Associate Commissioner. And the recommendation was that we revote the budget. We also called Tracy Novick of MASC, who is someone on your side, to ask for her advice. She recommended that the committee take a revote, because the bottom line is, the budget you approved is not the same number as the budget in the mayor's budget book. So it's, it causes some issues. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Nick?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, it just, you know, it stemmed from the fact that, you know, we can't enter a budget into the accounting software that is not the budget that the appropriating authority approved. You know, what was approved by, by this committee, you know, was, was one budget, which obviously had all the line items detailed for me when I got here. But then, the, the city council approved amount was, was less. So, you know, when it came time to enter the budget into the system in the summer, when the year was rolled over, as Dr. Leclair said, we, we did reach out to a few sources for, you know, some advice on, on what to, to do. And, you know, all sources pretty much pointed in the direction of your school committee should revote the budget as more of a procedural move, just so it mirrors the, the bottom line total that, that is in the mayor's budget book. So I, I don't know, the, the original approved amount from the, the school committee was in the amount of eighteen million four hundred fifty thousand nine hundred seven dollars. The city council-approved budget was in the amount of seventeen million eight hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents, which would be a, a decrease of five hundred sixty-one thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty cents. So what we're asking tonight is that you, you revote our, our bottom line, so it, it mirrors with what's in the city's budget book, and then, you know, everything's, you know, the way it needs to be in the accounting software.
Any questions?
So, just to be clear about this, because it, it, there's a little bit of a chicken and egg kind of situation here. So we are moving forward with the full amount of budget that we planned on and approved back in March and April. The issue here is that we want to, and so we're going to be taking the additional amount. If we vote tonight to remove the over half-million dollars off of our budget, we are then going to take that amount and go to the city council's appropriations, as they've recognized we will, and come to them and say, this is the amount that we now want funding to be able to do. And I think you put most of it on the vocational line items, right, tuition line items. So that, that's the additional funds that we need to be able to pay the schools that we're sending our students to. And so then, we, we approve tonight the budget at the lower amount, go to city council's finance department, get that additional funding, and then it comes back in, and it just becomes an added amount to the budget that we've now approved as of tonight. Is that correct?
Are you asking me that question?
So do we need to, then, do we then take a different budget? Do we then, do we then vote a different budget that includes that amount later on?
I, I think the hope is that the mayor created a stabilization account, and I think that our hope is that we would go to the city council and ask for an appropriation to be put into that stabilization account. Mayor, am I, am I?
I mean, you could certainly, yeah, I mean, it's, for me, it's a multi-pronged issue, or, or set of questions. One, I completely agree with the revote. I mean, I'm going to abstain, because I always do on, on the budget votes. But I, I believe what you and Nick are trying to achieve is you tying in, the department tying in correctly with, with the city council's approved budget. So the amount is apples to apples, and, you know, the, you know, using, doing what every other department does. And I, I completely agree with that. So the checkbooks are the same. And I, I think that that's a, a solid accounting process. I know that Jessica and Hadal, our treasurer and auditor, will be happy about that. And then, the appropriation request, you know, sending it forward, it's up to this committee and Allison. I don't know how it would, would work with the school committee to put an appropriation through. would work with the school committee to put an appropriation through. But I, I would also just remind, um, I guess two things. One, anytime you want to put in appropriation, I promise not to stop it. I won't. Um, however, our auditor and treasurer will not endorse that appropriation right now because free cash is not certified.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, we hope it will be by the beginning of, of November. That, that's usually, and we're really close to submitting that paperwork. But, but also too, we're hoping by October, one, our goal is to get that RFP out for the audit. Um, that will do a couple of things about the treatment of money on city and school side, as well as form a consistent chart of accounts between city and, and school. Uh, I would hope that it goes out, um, October one. I, uh, Cindy, I, I got the email that Megan will serve on the RFP review committee. Um, and then Bill Lynch, uh, was appointed by President Gomez, who I just see during the call. Uh, and we've already put together, I, I don't want to say, yeah, examples of what other school districts have used for RFPs to be reviewed by that committee. Uh, they go out, we get, you know, hopefully proposals back. Um, those proposals are scored on, as they should be under thirty B and, um, an account, an auditor is, is chosen from there and then it, it undergoes it. Um, we have a lot of audited documents. Um, so it would be grabbing that and I would think talking to some personnel on the business side about the city and school. And then when we come out of that, looking at gaps and, and whatnot of, you know, the funding line item by line item and what the amount of an appropriation would be. Um, as far as the stabilization account, my plan, um, from the get-go and I said I would do it. I created the stabilization account and I said I would fund it if free cash allowed once it was certified to the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I would attempt to do that every year as long as I am mayor. Um, and then the, the appropriation would come straight out of that account. I, I think the conversation is i- it, the appropriation amount that you're looking for, you know, basically to get your budget back to what you requested as a school committee. Um, there won't be enough money in that stabilization account. And I think that there's a conversation to be had. You know, you can request, anybody, any department can request a, an appropriation. I don't block them. Um, you know, and it's out of what fund? You know, whether that's the reserve, um, partially, you know, depending on what it is cable, uh, capital stabilization. But I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if automatically the appropriation request comes out of the stabilization account I created, Allison. Um, I think we look at the amount after the audit and figure out where, where best that, that would come. Um, and again, you know, while I said I wouldn't block any appropriation, I'm certainly going to advocate to the pros and cons. And the committee would, or, you know, represented by, I would assume Cindy and Allison, Nick or whoever would need to just go through the process of, it would be, the city council refers it to their finance committee and it's discussed, the recommendation is made, and then it goes back to full council for, for a vote. Um, you know, and, and so that's the, and a part of that will be the finance committee asking how much are in these reserve accounts before and after appropriation? Um, how does it affect capital spending? They're all questions they would ask anyways, but just as a forward advance. So, um, the idea is two hundred thousand dollars in the stabilization account. And again, I, I don't, like, I need the amount and the amount isn't going to be clear in my mind until after we get those audits, uh, the audit back. And I think there's a conversation right between, um, Allison, Nick, Hadal and Jessica as the financial people on, on both sides, city and school, so they're more aligned. But bottom line, I am, you know, voting, voting to match, voting the school budget to match, um, the city, I think, is a good way to start to get a little more to apples to apples, right? Um, so that the both checkbooks are, are matching with the same amount.
Which is a reminder is what we do every year. Remember last year we were seven cents off, so we, you took a revote. So, yeah.
Yes, it, it just, no, I agree. I mean, that's not new, but I, I just want to make it clear it's good. It makes sense accounting-wise, but I wouldn't, I, I don't think it's, it's also a vote to demonstrate the amount of an appropriation that might come forward. It, for me, it's two different transactions.
So I talked to Barb Olombard and she agreed that this is a simple thing to do and that all it really does is align the two bottom lines so that they'll match. Does that make sense to everybody? Um, so my, my understanding also is that we can do that tonight, although I'm looking at it and it's really, it's like discussion to revoke. I, I didn't realize that it didn't say discussion and revoke, you know?
We can move the vote until next time.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what we should do, is move it to the next meeting, which is the October eleventh. I think it's pretty simple. We just mark it clearly as a revote to align the two of them. Um, and I think what that does is clear up tonight was a chance to understand why we would be doing it and, and what it's going to look like. Um, and then we just actually have a quick vote. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, all right. So that'll be the next meeting. Um, and then again, um, it should be just a very simple, um, act. We're just going to redo it. Um, and then the discussion to,
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, and then the discussion to request an appropriation from the city council. I almost don't even know why we're doing, why we're needing a discussion.
I, I'm not looking for an action step. I'm just looking to make you aware. Um, as the mayor mentioned, um, our business manager, Nick, is in contact with, um, Hadal down in the city finance department all the time. So he's, um, very cognizant of when the, the, when free cash is hoping, hope to be cer- certified. So we just wanted to, um, make sure this is still on everyone's radar.
Right.
Um, and make sure people understand that. Um, and I'll, I'll say this tonight and I, I'll say it, I'll probably say it again at other times. When the city budget came in, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars less than the budget the school committee approved at your request, at the school committee request, we did not eliminate positions. We did not make cuts. So I want everyone to be cognizant of that. So our budget is still built on the higher number that Nick mentioned tonight. Um, and so that's money. It's like if I'm at home and I'm spending more than I'm earning. You know, it's, you know, it's going to catch up at some point. I'm going to have to pay the piper. Um, so our budget is going to be five hundred and sixty thousand dollars higher than what the city is providing to us. So at some point, we're going to need to have the conversation about a, an appropriation. Um, yeah, I think the two hundred thousand dollars in the stabilization account that the mayor had just discussed, I think that will be very helpful. And so maybe the number gets reduced. But right now, that five hundred and sixty thousand is a pretty close exact match to our increased transportation budget. So I need to, and, and, and I didn't get away with having less buses this year, believe me. Um, and with, you know, it's, it's, it's not going to get easier. That's five hundred and sixty thousand still needs to happen. And I don't have a lot of personnel savings. As you've heard Nick articulate, we're very fortunate. We have most of our positions filled. So we've used our personnel budget. I probably went over in my personnel budget because, you know, there were not a lot of applicants for positions. So where five years ago, I may have had a hundred applicants for a fourth grade position. I might have had eight this round. So, you know, we, we maybe went over on some of our salaries. Um, Nick's doing all that calculation now. But, uh, it's not going to be a year where we're going to have a lot of savings in areas. So I want to be very open and upfront with people on that. Transportation is high, personnel is high. Um, we still have staff out, you know, going out with COVID. We require a five-day absence. You know, that requires subs or sub-coverage. So we're not having a lot of savings.
Might I add, our, um, our two forty special ed entitlement grant came in seventy-six thousand dollars less than we expected.
And that was a personnel grant that covered personnel. Um, so it was a huge hit. That was more than one staff member, um, hit.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty dramatic. Um, yeah, no, I agree. And it feels a little frightening to be not laying off people, holding on to positions and yet knowing that we're already at that, um, piece, um, at that place where we don't have that money. Um, and President Gomez is here. I'm not going to put him on the spot. But one of the things that came out of our budget discussions with the city council is that we realized that for communication purposes, we need to set up meetings between the school committee and city council so that, um, and Nick, you would be involved with those, um, hopefully. And, um, you're a very important person that we need to have at that table, um, along with Dr. Leclerc. So, um, I need to get in touch with President Gomez. We need to figure out when we're going to do them and how often because it was a great idea that we realized, um, would improve kind of our relations, but also our communications. Maren, and then?
That's already in the works. I, I, I had reached out over a month ago to, um, city council member Dan Rist. Um, he just got back in touch with me, I think, this morning or yesterday. Um, and so it's just starting to get, for those meetings to be scheduled.
Good. Okay. So are you going to take over that, that scheduling piece?
Of course.
Okay. All right. Good. That's awesome. All right. Um, and then Mary, you, you have another question or a comment?
Um, yes, actually, to go back to the figure that Nick just shared with us. And I don't know if it's the same account. So it, the amount when it was short, does that include, um, increased funding for Circuit Breaker or other special ed accounts that the legislature is, is telling me that happened? Or, or will that number be adjusted or do we know?
It's separate from Circuit Breaker. It's our, our, basically our special ed entitlement grant. Um, as Dr. Leclerc said, it partially funds personnel and also some out-of-district tuitions. Um, generally, in my experience, the amount a district gets is relatively similar from year to year. Um, so when the notice came out, it was, um, it was a shock to our special ed director, Sarah Mocheck. She was not expecting that. Um, you know, so, um, you know, it may toward the end of the year, we, we might get a little bit more. Um, because every now and then some districts don't claim all their money. And, you know, I remember at the end of last year, we got like an additional four thousand or so dollars in North Hampton out of nowhere because it divvied, uh, they basically divvy it up between districts, whatever's left. So, I mean, you know, I don't want to bank on that because it's, it's completely an unknown at this point, but, um, you know, we ended up having to adjust. Um, I can't say that when I closed the, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, right when I got hired, um, I ended up reclassifying some expenses to Circuit Breaker from the two forty grant. Um, and I, I did so for two reasons. One, um, would be to sort of help out with this issue when we found out it was an issue. Um, and number two, to help us meet our maintenance of effort requirement. Um, because we can't get that two forty grant each year unless we meet the maintenance of effort. Um, you know, so in order, you know, when I try to calculate what that number's going to be, you look at last year's grant application. You look at the three sources of your special ed spending that count towards maintenance of effort, which would be your local appropriation from your school committee. Anything the city pays towards special ed, which is that, that's harder to calculate. You kind of have to wait for the end of the year report template to be out. Because a lot of that is special ed differential for school choice and charter kids that are tuitioning out. And I don't know those numbers because they're not part of our district. You know, the state only knows them. Um, and then Circuit Breaker is the third source. So when, when you add those together, you get your number and you have to spend at least as much as you did the prior year. Uh, unless you have a qualifying reason, like for instance, perhaps you had three kids graduate that were out of district tuition. Then you have a reason. I mean, if, if you get three hundred thousand dollars to tuition off your books, you know, you're not going to meet maintenance of effort the following year because your expenses have dramatically gone down. But, um, that wasn't our case here. We didn't have anybody graduate in that, in that case. So, um, in any event, that's what I had to do in order to kind of make up for that. So it, you know, it worked out the best it was going to based on the circumstances.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others? Questions, comments?
Okay. And so I can jump into E.
Yep.
So the transportation contract, when we received it from, um, Durham, and I think it was just a, a template in the append, one of the appendixes had the signature page, um, had the mayor, not, it didn't have Nicole's name specifically. It was just a template that had the, it said mayor for the signatory. But in our, in East Hampton, the mayor is not the signatory of school district contracts. It's the chair of the school committee. In some communities, that is the mayor, but not in East Hampton. So we need to just have it say school committee chair. But in order to make that change, I think you need to approve that change.
So does anybody?
And so it's just a word?
Yes, it's really simple.
And it needs to say school committee chair.
Right, right. It's just fixing that particular contract.
Right. I didn't think you want me to just cross that out. So you have to take a vote to change it to the school committee chair.
I move to change the language on the contract to the school committee chair from the mayor.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, um, Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor?
Lashapal, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Laurie?
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
And I'm aye.
And Cindy Krasinski, aye. So we can get that changed right away. All right. So on to school committee reports and discussions. Maren?
But it's committed to not meet.
Okay. And any other subcommittee update?
No, the, um, policy has not met either.
All right. Laurie?
I'd like to update, um, on the walk, bike and roll event. We had talked about, um, at the last meeting, combining it with our grand opening of Mountain View. And we held a meeting and decided that logistically it's better to hold, um, the separate events, especially because of the date changes, just a lot of logistics. So we're going to have the walk, bike and roll event on Thursday, which is October thirteenth, and that coincides with the International Day, which is that week, the twelfth, thirteenth. We will have a rain date of the fourteenth. And this is the first time that we will all be going to the Mountain View School, but there will still be the same times. So seven, but we say seven thirty, but those, uh, middle schoolers are so eager, they're there sometimes at seven. before I get there. So 7:15, 7:30 for the middle schoolers and then eight o'clock for the elementary. So, um, also we are planning to make it easier for, um, the parking for their, the big event in October. And I almost have a hundred percent confirmation from Williston. Um, I heard from the business manager, but he's going to get back to me one more time that we would be able to use the parking on Taft Street for extra parking. And what we would like to do is, um, guide people through the path through Nanitak to show them the back way to get into Mountain View. So that's going to be, um, an extra way to get to the Mountain View event. And, um, Jean Libby also wanted me to mention, she had sent us all an invitation for the school committee to be there at the grand opening. And there will be school committee members at a table to talk to the public at that event. So we look forward to seeing you there.
All right. Um, so now we are at the section called other. Do we have an other? Ben?
Um, I just wanted to throw a little update into the mix about, um, this, the idea of the student advisory committee. I had exchanged an email with, um, Principal Evans, and I'm going to meet with him hopefully in the next week or so, um, to talk about, you know, uh, how we could generate more energy around that. Um, and then I had just a couple of questions, like, uh, maybe they're actually just comments. But, uh, it's been really great, sort of, we're 10 or 11 days into Mountain View as an elementary school and hearing so much positive energy while also hearing things that, uh, need work. And, and obviously there's an enormous amount of logistical stuff going on and it's incredible to see how much work is going into it. Um, but I just was curious if like, there's going to be a space for some of these issues to be talked about publicly or to let parents know that things are being worked on. Like specifically, one of the things that was a concern was that there are, are some playground issues around accessibility, apparently. Like there's, there's some, some structures that kids can't access. From what I understand, I, I, I need to talk more to some of the parents who are thinking about this. But, um, I was just curious about that because it sounded kind of problematic. And, um, uh, I would like to add that to the, to your, into your, uh, frame of reference. But also there was a question about food in the cafeterias and like whether or not we could possibly have, um, composting become part of the, the, the daily uh, ritual of like leaving the cafeteria. And, uh, I don't know if this is, uh, something we could talk about more too at some point, but, um, I know ki- kids are being asked to throw food away and it seems like we could do better than that. So I'm just throwing it into the mix.
Okay. Any other other?
I have two. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice a little bit. I wanted to give my usual PTO update. Um, I was able to attend the PTO meeting in person, um, last time I held it, which was great. They hold them, um, I think they might alternate between virtual and being held at Mountain View. Um, but they have childcare. So when you go in person, there's someone who will play with your children and you can sit with the adults and talk. It was really fun. They have lots of stuff going on. Maybe you've already seen the flyers and the, um, notification about their current fundraiser, um, which I keep calling the bulb sale. But I think it's something more official than that. And that's what, I guess it's called the bulb sale, actually. Um, so check out that. There's links posted on social media. There should have been, um, I don't know if there's a link directly on the website or not, but you can always get in touch with the folks who run the PTO primarily, um, Ann Tally and her co-chair, uh, Liz Kokan or Cosan, I'm not sure how to say her last name. We just came on with her. Um, and they just donated, um, that $1,200 to the library at Mountain View, which is great. And they're planning all sorts of fun stuff. I'm excited to be back in person for all of this. So, um, things like movie nights and, um, helping out the open house and the grand opening and a gingerbread night again, um, and maybe some service events like a food drive or penny wars or something. They're, they're cooking up lots of ideas and, um, they definitely want more parents to come and join them. So I hope if you are catching this later or, um, listening right now, that you'll consider going to join them. They have lots of great stuff going on. Um, and I have another, another other that I wanted to ask about, which was, um, if we have a COVID update and how that is going, um, this year. I guess it's a question.
I don't have a COVID update. I'm happy to say that.
Are we tracking like cases? Do we have that inflation worked out?
The nurse's office tracks cases as far as fam- when families communicate them to them, um, which we've asked families to do, but I can't guarantee that it's 100% happening. Um, we've had some staff out with COVID. So we're tracking that. Staff is sharing that with us. But I would say overall, it's not, um, it's not really a big factor in the schools right now.
Absences are skyrocketed. Anecdotally Button Road is like completely out, out of commission, uh, not with COVID, but the kids are all staying home.
I've heard other things strapped and sinus infections. And I think COVID is just kind of lumped in there with some of those numbers.
Since we do have numbers, can you start to report those out to us so that we can have a?
I will check to see what the numbers, I, I don't know how, how much they're tracking, but I will check with them. To, I think particularly at Mountain View, they're tracking it, but I, they have not given me any numbers at all.
I wonder too, if there's a way to, I don't know what, um, like PHI is allowed or HIPAA for the kind of stuff. But like, can we get a sense of absenteeism? Like, maybe that will give us a clue on, you know, how many kids are, are out? If we have an issue in the school, it's, I mean, the problem is not unique to you. It's like in East Hampton, it's like we don't track cases anymore. So.
And it's because we're not asked to provide that information to anyone anymore. The Department of Ed is not collecting it. DPH is not asking us for it. City Health Department's not asking us for it. So it's, um, it's just something that, you know, when parents call, let us know.
Okay, I love you. I was about to ask him, but it looks like there's another one, so I'll wait.
I just wanted to let you know, uh, local school, I hate to, I, it's not squealing because they, they all masked up again because of cases. So in town, so people may just want to know that if, if people want to be more careful with masks, you know, when people are coming in from other places. So I just wanted to mention that.
We do have people in all our buildings that mask. And of course you have to mask to go in and out of the nurse's office. We have staff that mask for various reasons. So masking is still a part of the school culture.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to mention that there are a lot of cases in town.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if you could, if we could target like, hey.
I'll give you some, I'll give you some information next time.
Yeah, this might be a nice time for a mask advisory if you have a high risk family member, that kind of thing.
Well, they are expecting that as, you know, people are inside more and the year goes on, that we're going to begin to see more cases. But again, there's no tracking. So, um, the only thing we would do is find out who's out and who voluntarily is saying we're out because of COVID. So it's kind of a tough situation, but I think certainly it's something we should explore. You know, or just pay attention to, we're going to see a rise in sickness anyway this year as kids readjust to not wearing masks and coughing and sneezing all over each other. You know, doing the normal sharing of germs that they do. So I think, you know, it's good to balance those two pieces. Um, because they're, they tend sometimes to get mixed in. You know, I've had classrooms closed down because of the fluke I'm given years. You know, you can't teach if two thirds of your entire class is gone. Yeah. So I think it's a good thing to pay attention to, but it is difficult to kind of parse out. You know, what's what? We can try. All right. Any other?
Yes, I had a, a couple of, one, a point of information. So on October 15th, the city is doing a flu shot clinic. Um, and you can sign up, go to the Department of Public Health's page on the city's page. Um, and appointments are recommended, but walk up, drive up is, is also fine. Um, and then the other question that involves the Department of Public Health, and I haven't asked them. Um, it just popped into my head now, with booster shots now available? And, and I, I say that because I know they are, but I don't know how they're being distributed. Um, and maybe public health has already scheduled stuff, but I'm wondering about booster clinics in East Hampton. We saw, uh, it was, um, it was really impressive when we did the, the micro clinics in the city, the numbers that we got. Um, so I'm just wondering, I, I, more saying it out loud about booster clinics and working with, um, the health director to, to have that happen in East Hampton.
Yeah, we talk, we talk, we talk all the time. So I think we can get something scheduled, particularly if you want to use the schools.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, North Hampton High did that for a while and it, it was pretty successful. Um, so, you know, I just, as far as availability, I think that the booster clinics, uh, just make themselves available to people who are more intimidated about signing up. If you go to walgreens.com and CVS.com, it's easy to get an appointment, it's very easy. Um, but for some people that feels really intimidating. And it was so difficult before to do that online that, um, I think the booster clinics just make it a lot easier to do that. Megan?
Yeah, uh, that was my, my follow up question was about, um, booster clinics. And if we can, um, have a booster campaign is probably the wrong word, but, uh, information that comes from the school about the bivalent, um, booster, because this is a different booster and kids over 12 and over are eligible for it. And it is needed. And regardless of what the president says on 60 Minutes, the pandemic is not over. Not when 350 people are dying a day, uh, in this country. And so, um, you know, I wish that they had asked me about the messaging for that program. They did not, but we have a really great opportunity to educate families that yes, yes, your 12 year old is eligible and can get it and needs it, and it will be really useful.
It's a good idea.
I'd be happy to work with you on any of that.
Good. I think you should, Megan. With all your free time, we can give you one more thing, but I think you'd be really good at that. So please do.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Are we ready to, um, move to vote on payroll and accounts payable? You all set with other? All right. And Megan?
All right. I have just two for us today. I'd like to make a motion to approve the school payroll dated 8/25/2022 and the amount of $359,842.
Second that.
Okay. Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor?
Maren La Chapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
And Cindy Krasinski, aye.
Let's make a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 8/25/2022 and the amount of $82,722.37. I'll second that.
Okay, Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor?
Maren La Chapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
And Cindy Krasinski, aye. Okay, so our next meetings will be October 11th, October 25th. We're going to figure out and decide whether or not to have November 8th day or to change that. So, um, I think we, um, our list for our agenda for October 11th is growing. Right now I have our curriculum committee discussion of vote, revoting the budget, presentation on dual language, and now a vote to change our November meeting. That's just some of our things from tonight. So, um, let's do it quickly and efficiently. Hopefully, because I think it's going to be quite long. All right. Um, so we have that. And then, uh, in December, there doesn't appear to be a conflict. That will be December 13th. So I think we're really good. Um, I thank you, everybody. And it's so nice to have a meeting that we didn't have to cancel and reschedule. So we will work out the kinks for future meetings. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I will move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay. Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor?
Maren La Chapelle, aye.
Ben?
Ben Hershey, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Megan?
Megan Harvey, good night.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
And Cindy Krasinski, aye. Thank you, everybody, and have a really good night. Stay safe, stay well.
Good night.
Night.
Bye bye.